Let's call the school board meeting to order. George, can you take role?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is part of the meeting where we state our goals. We have two goals, the first one being student achievement and the second is financial prudence. And we talk about every week about everything on the agenda relates to those two goals and how we balance the two against each other to make sure that we do the ultimate best with the taxpayers' money to educate our children to the utmost level. With that, we'll move on to item number five, donations to the Excellence in Athletics campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I know Tom Burchan from the Strongsville Chamber trustees. He was trying to get here as quickly as he can, but I don't see that he's here yet. So if he shows up, we will recognize him again at that time. But just want to share, as it says here in the agenda, we are very blessed to live in such a supportive and giving community and especially our local community groups. As we know, the city club has already donated to our athletics and our Excellence in Athletics campaign. And I met with the Chamber trustees about three to four weeks ago to share with them the details of our project. And I have to say, I went in there with a specific dollar amount that I asked them for consideration. And I was called the next day and they doubled that amount. And that just goes to show the support that the Chamber has for our city and our school district. So thrilled to recognize them. We will have a press release going out tomorrow to share the recommendation that a donation in the amount of $50,000 be accepted from the Strongsville Chamber of Commerce as a part of the Excellence in Athletic Campaign, as detailed in Exhibit A.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? The only thing I'll say is that not only was the Chamber a part of the Excellence in Athletics program at the senior night, they also provided scholarships there too. So I mean, that organization really coming through for our district and it's so appreciated.
It is. The number of scholarships they've given and their generosity. And we will, on Wednesday, there is the Chamber luncheon, the scholarship luncheon. So that is where they will go into depth about the accolades of our students and community students that receive the scholarships and once again to see their generosity of supporting our district and our kids. So thank you for making that point, Mr. Neso.
Can I have a vote? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes, five oh. Excellent. Maybe the next meeting we can have a running total because I mean, this number's...
Absolutely.
This number's really nice.
Yeah. And hopefully, next month, we'll have a couple more donations on the docket.
Great. That brings us to item six, public comment. I don't see any green slips. Item seven, Treasuries Report. George?
Thank you, Mr. Neso. Tonight, I have one item, a discussion item. It's the presentation of the five-year forecast. As you're aware, the board must adopt a five-year forecast twice a month, October and May. So this is the May forecast. So I'm going to go up to the podium. Easier for me to present up there and I got the PowerPoint.
Perfect.
Alright, so... So as mentioned, this is my second time doing the five-year forecast here. The first time was in October, which was the same time we did the annual budget. So it's kind of a refresh from that to see where we stand from that. The five-year forecast contains, the contents of the five-year forecast, the major assumptions, general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, and then at the end, I have a five-year forecast summary. Moving into the major assumptions. For revenue, the property tax collection rate, the forecast assumes the collection rate will remain at the same level as calendar year 2015 or 96.6%. A 1% change in the collection rate represents about a half a million dollars. During the year, Cuyahoga County completed its tri-annual update in 2015, which resulted in a 1.7% increase in valuation for Strongsville. Property values were updated for the 2016 collection year. And just to point out, this 1.7% increase doesn't necessarily mean our taxes are going to go up that amount. The mills that we pass our levies for at that time is what we're going to collect. So any change in collections we're going to see based on this change in valuation is any new levies or any new construction that comes in. In March 2012, residents renewed a five-year, six-mill levy with collection beginning January 2013. The forecast assumes the levy will expire in tax year December 31st of 16 and collections will continue through December 31st of 2017. State funding, the forecast assumes for fiscal year 16, the current year, 3.6 million of TPP funding, the tangible personal property tax, of which 600,000 will be eliminated next school year and fiscal year 17. And in fiscal year 18, the remaining $3 million will be eliminated for a total loss of TPP funding of 3.6 million each year thereafter. And then enrollment, the forecast assumes a 3% to 4% annual decline in enrollment. For enrollment, the only impact that it has for revenues is with our casino dollars, that's where it shows the impact, where that's based on a per pupil amount. And also state aid, we're on the guarantee. So as enrollment declines, just much more of the guarantee that will be on. But it doesn't change our bottom line, it just puts us more on the guarantee with state aid. Moving on to the major assumptions, expenditures on Slide 5. In staffing assumptions for the general fund, last school year 15, we had 692 employees on the general fund. This school year, we have 617. Our next school year will be down about 18 to 654. And then thereafter, fiscal year 18, we're estimating about five due to enrollment decline and then nine after that. The forecast assumes all union agreements as currently defined. In '16, we closed an elementary building, Zellers Elementary, that we're in now, which has been converted to our board offices. Next year, we're closing Drake Elementary and consolidating our Center Middle School and Albion Middle School into a brand-new middle school building. Healthcare rates are forecasted to increase 10% each year in fiscal years 17 through 20. In '16, we saw a 3% increase. And the forecast also assumes a $500,000 increase for technology upgrades in fiscal year 17 and 20. And I believe Mrs. Turner will talk more on that this board meeting, on where that money's going. General fund revenues, Slide 7, where the money comes from. So as you can see, our largest pot of money is from local taxes, which is about 68%. Then our state foundation, which is about 13.8%. Our state Ohio reimbursement, that includes the homestead and rollback credit for property taxes that is a credit to the taxpayers, just reimbursed through state aid. It's about 8.3%. Our tangible personal property tax makes up about 5.1%, but as mentioned, that's going to be going away starting fiscal year 18, where it's going to be completely phased out. Our TIF revenues are about 3% and all other revenues make up about 2% of the total revenues. So Slide 8. And then just moving forward in the presentation, Slide 8 and 9, for those that have a handout. Slide, the way that the presentation's put together, the first slide's the chart and then the next slide is the reconciliation of what changed. So I'm not going to touch more on the reconciliation, I'm just going to touch the graphs but speak to the changes. So Slide 8, property taxes. In 2016, estimating that we'll receive about $49.4 million in property taxes. It's actually an increase from 15 to 47.5 from last school year. But next school year, I'm anticipating that it's going to dip down a little bit to 48.6. And the reason for the dip is not because of less taxes, it's just the timing of when taxes are collected. So as you can see from '13, '14, '15, '16, how it kind of fluctuates a little bit. And that fluctuation is due to the timing. Tax bills are sent out based on a calendar year. And we're receiving them on a fiscal year, so the timing kind of crosses over. I spent this past month just trying to analyze why the biggest fluctuation. This is basically what I came to. A little bit was due because of the increase in collection rate. We did see an increase in collection rate, but primarily the timing. So in '14, is when we see in fiscal year 2014, the first collection we see is in the fall, which is for calendar year 14. And it's the second half collection of the tax bills that went out. So tax bills are sent out at the beginning of a calendar year. And what you want to see is a 52-48% split of when people pay their tax bills. Because some people pay it all upfront or you split it over the course of the year. So what you want to see is a 52-48 split. Residential is pretty consistent in that, where commercials, where it fluctuates and it's causing these fluctuations. So going back to the fall of '14, in the fall, we saw a 51% collection split, which you anticipate about a 48. Then in the spring, you saw a 53, so that's why it was increased to 49.2 in 2014. Then in '15, because we received 53.46 in the spring, then the following fall, the rest of it, 46% was collected. And then that fall, again, you saw 48, no, the fall, you saw 46. And in the spring, you saw a decrease to 48. And then in '16, the fall of '16, because the spring of, I'm sorry, calendar year 15, the spring, we saw 48%. And then in the fall of calendar year 15, which is fiscal year 16, was the difference of 51.9. And then this current calendar year, this spring, we saw 53.6% of the split. So that's why it's increasing. And '17, I'm anticipating just a normal split. Did I confuse everyone?
I found it very interesting, but I'm an accountant.
Does anyone have any questions? I might have...
I'm just interested in the big drop in '19 and '20.
So the big drop in '19 and '20, so starting in '18, so we're collecting our renewal levies through December 31st through 2017. So that's part of fiscal year 18. So in '18, we're going to see a half-year collection of the renewal levy. So that's where you're seeing a $3 million decrease from '17 to '18. Then the remaining $3 million's coming off in '18. So about $6.5 million decrease because, for the forecast, I have to assume that the levy is not continuing in this instance. At the end, we're allowed to add it back on the end for certifying contracts and whatnot. So that's the decrease there. Any questions on this? So moving on to state foundation. Our core aid has been about the same, about 9.7 million. As mentioned, we're on the guaranteed. This year, our guarantee amount is, of this 9.7, is about 3.6 million. What you see in the red is the TPP supplement. As mentioned, the TPP reimbursement's being phased out. And what they did for this school year and next school year, they're moving it from one bucket to the next. It's been phased out in the TPP bucket, but the state is holding you harmless through a state supplement, which is being added to our foundation. So that's where the red in fiscal year 16 is and '17. And then the green, we receive about $280,000 in casino revenues. And for the core aid, in '18 to '20, I'm anticipating, not anticipating, I just reduced it by 2% each year. I got a feeling just from everything I've been hearing out of Columbus that in the next biannual budget, they want to do something with the guarantee. So just on caution, I just reduced it a little bit. Property tax allocation. The blue is the homestead and rollback credit. And it's about 6.1 million a year, where you're seeing dipping down. And '18 to '19 is the decrease because of the renewal levy. And the red is the TPP dollars. As you can see, that we've been receiving about 3.6. And then it's being phased out slowly to '18, where it's completely gone. Other revenues, Slide 14. TIF dollars, that's been hanging around about $2 million. Last year, we received about $2.9 million in '15. In 2016, we received about $2.1. The increase was last year was due to a big delinquent that came in. Now that they've been caught up, it's, I'm anticipating it'd be pretty consistent. And then other revenues, which is made up of Medicaid, reimbursement, kindergarten pre-K tuition, paid-up participate, trainer fees, cell tower, catastrophic aid, about 1.4 million this year and 1.2 million next year, the year's out. Also included is some other miscellaneous revenues that we get, which it kind of fluctuates from year to year that you can't really depend on each year. On Slide 16, general fund revenues. So this assumes that the, the red assumes that the levy has been extended and the blue assumes that the levy has not been extended. But in either case, it shows the decrease due to the TPP funding. So you could see our revenues were pretty flat. And then because of the, and then in '17 to '18, you see the decline on the red graph. And that decline is primarily due to TPP, always due to PPP and then it stays, then it stays flat. And then you could see the impact in the blue if the renewal levy is not passed on top of the TPP reduction. So moving on to general fund expenditures, on Slide 18, where the money goes. So salaries and benefits are our biggest component of expenditures, making up about 81% of the budget. I wasn't here then, but Mr. Abba tells me that about five years ago, or five to six years ago, that this number was about 90, in the 90s, 92%.
When I got here, five years ago, the number was 92%.
Right. So come a long way to use our dollars, to became more efficient and be able to use our budget to non-personal items as well in the classroom.
And just to say, I mean, now you want to maintain that number in that range because all the, if you look at, if you look at the high achieving districts, if you look at them, they're in the 82, 85% range, or somewhere in that range, right? So you want to stay there, you don't want to go, you don't want to keep driving that number low. You know, you want to get it here and this way it allows you to fund all the other things that you need to do that augment, you know.
The next biggest piece is purchased services of 9.5. The largest components there is tuition that we pay to other districts, utilities, legal fees and a few other purchase services that are included in there. I'll touch on a few slides. Materials and supplies, 3.2 million, equipment about 1%. Other objects, which is any general fund debt, county auditor fees are the biggest chunk there. And then our community school deductions, about 1.1%. It's about $750,000 to $800,000. Slide 19, salaries. In 2016, the current fiscal year...
Excuse me, George?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. On that county auditor fee, that fee they charge us to collect our taxes, is that based on the amount of taxes they collect or is it a set fee?
It's 1% of the taxes that they collect.
Okay. See, that's a ripoff.
Yeah.
Because they don't do any more work if they collect 1 million or 10 million.
Right.
So yeah, it's something we could probably, I'm not sure what Cuyahoga County does for us anyway. Okay, thanks.
Slide 19, salaries. This fiscal year, 2016, it's trending about 39.1 million, which is down from 2015 to 39.5. Next school year, I'm anticipating an increase to 39.9. And it's primarily due to the negotiated COLA increases, step increases, adding back some budget savings and then being offset by a reduction of positions. And then in the out-years, with the increases and the decreases that we have forecasted with the reduction of positions kind of offsetting the two. Benefits, the largest piece here is healthcare. Anticipating 8.7 million in healthcare this school year, which is down from 9 million last school year. And then in 2017, anticipating a jump of, to 9.4 million, a 10% increase. And our healthcare is based on a calendar year. So from '16 to '17, we're only going to see half of that 10%. Where in '18 through '19, it's going to be a 10% increase throughout the board. That's a conservative number. It could go either way, really, with the healthcare. Been working with a consultant and that's his best guess. We've had a couple good years. That kind of trends, so we're due for a bad year, as he tells me. But this year, same thing, we forecasted a 10%, came in at 3. So there might be some area there where that number could be a little fluid. And then in '17, also bumped up.
Do you know what 1% of that's worth?
What's that?
Do you know what 1% of that's worth?
10%, what's that?
I mean, you can get back to me another time, but I would be interested in what...
Probably about $80,000.
Yeah.
If 10% is about, seven, a little under $700,000.
Okay.
The green, all others made up of unemployment, workers' comp, Medicare. And anticipating increase here just because of, we have some RIFs and some unemployment. So kind of budgeted for that, just in case how those RIFs come in. Moving on, the next piece is purchased services. The biggest pieces here is utilities. We're seeing utilities this school year trending about 1.7 million, up from last school year of 1.5. And just kind of forecasting it out, about $100,000 increase each year. Hoping we might see some savings when the buildings come offline. But until we see how that middle school impacts, I'm kind of just having the current trend in there. The other biggest influx here is tuition to other districts. As you can see, this year, we spent about $2.7 million to tuition to other districts. And that includes tuition for Ed Choice, which is about $400,000. Our post-secondary options, college credit plus, which this school year is about $275,000. Next year, I'm anticipating that to jump up. I'll talk about more than a minute. Our special ed placement, about $1.1 million. Open enrollment, about $200,000. And our community schools, it's trending anywhere from $750,000 to $800,000 this school year. One of the biggest jumps in '16 to '17 is because of the college credit plus. The way that the state bills us now is, it's a year behind. So how they're taking it out of our foundation this year is for last year's kids. They want to get caught up, so for next school year, they're doing a catch-up. So we're essentially going to be paying for four semesters, for three semesters next year. It's going to be the spring, the fall and the summer. So it's essentially one more semester than we're currently paying. And then also, we saw a 24% increase in students enrolled this school year and next school year. And speaking to the high school, for what they have registered so far, it's another 17% increase. So that's one of the primary reasons of this jump here, it's about $300,000. Our special ed placements increased to about $100,000. Doesn't look like we're going to have any kids coming off due to graduation. Just anticipating some may come on based on trends. And just also, based on trends, put a little increase in there for our community schools as well.
So the big increase is college plus?
Yeah, the college credit plus.
And that's where high school students attend college courses and get credit, and we pay?
Correct.
George, I just, not challenge you, but to keep a close eye on the utilities. And just to give you an example, with the bond, we're able to essentially remove five inefficient buildings.
Right.
Repurpose this one, have a new middle school. And to give you an example, Drake, being an all-electric open building, cost the utilities of close to mark 130, 110?
It's around 100.
About under 100, whereas this building was only $30,000 for utilities. So as we go, and I understand, there's no, we don't have a baseline yet, we have to wait for that. But let's keep a sharp eye on that because I think that the plan was to reduce our utilities by the consolidation of these buildings and the removal of the old ones.
Right. That's what we're hoping, until we see how that baseline comes up with a middle school. It was hard to reduce it. And I think just electric rates in general went up.
I get it, I get it, just keep it in.
We are going to keep this building very warm in the summer and very cold.
Alright, so... Slide 25, materials and supplies. Pretty consistent from year to year. We have about half a million dollars in instructional supplies, also another half a million in textbooks. And then another half a million for fuel for our buses. And then other, about $900,000, and that's made up of office supplies, custodial supplies, software that's being used for curriculum, and then also bus parts, about $260,000. Equipment, we've had about half a million dollars in there for equipment. Starting next school year, we added another $500,000 in there for technology. And as mentioned, Mrs. Turner's going to speak about that later on tonight, where that's going to go.
So if you go back to that slide for a second. So those red bar, the red bar up top, which, red seems like it's, it's bad, but that red is good.
Right.
I mean, that's the funding of technology. And if you go all the way back to Slide 5, which you don't have to. But on Slide 5, that's where we talked about where we closed Zellers, we closed this building. That's where we talked about where we closed Drake, talked about consolidating the buildings. It was all the actions that we took in Allen, throw Allen in there as well, throw the, you know, the other two buildings.
OBS.
OBS, all those buildings, we took, so essentially what we did was we converted fixed costs into variable costs so that we could use that money to better the education of our students. So we had excess capacity, it was just wasted. And I know it wasn't, not always comfortable to do, but in closing down those buildings, we can now take that money and instead of just for extra buildings that are sitting around that aren't benefiting our students, we've taken that money now and we're able to fund technology. So we've got, you know, all the Chromebooks and all the other things that are coming our way. It's just, I mean, that's why we did all this, so we could get there. Because for the longest time, we couldn't get there. And now we are. And that's huge. So I mean, that's really kind of make us a premier district.
When I first came on the board, our computer labs at the high school were using, Richard, you know, was like three versions of Windows.
XP.
Yeah, we were using XP in our high school computer labs. High school computer labs using XP software two and a half years ago. It just not, it wasn't acceptable.
Pretty cool.
Alright, so to close out the expenditures, Slide 29, other objects and transfers. The biggest pieces here is, in the blue is our general fund debt. This year, we spent about $600,000. Next year, the year's out, $500,000. There was a debt issue that came off. Other objects, the 1.4, the biggest pieces here are the county auditor fees, audit fees, and just miscellaneous other objects. And then the green is transfers and advances. This year, it's about 1.4, 1.5 million. Next year, decreasing it down to about 1.3. And what that's made up of is we have budgeted in there $230,000 for food this year, knocking that down to $50,000 next year based on the proposal that we had out there for the RFP. Uniform school supplies, we have about $120,000 budgeted there for the student fees. And then termination benefits, about 1.1 million. And then, starting in fiscal year 17, I also added a transfer in there for the trainer fees from Southwest that we would save that's going into the Excellence in Athletics Fund.
And George, just confirm, we have refinanced or explored refinancing all the debt that we could possibly refinance to get lower interest rates.
Right. And I'm still working with our stifle about another opportunity, but we might have to wait on that one. But I've been researching it. And a couple years ago, we, I think it was last year or the year before, we refinanced one out of Fund 3. And to wrap it up, the summary. So financial prudence, cost-saving efforts that we've done. In this school year from last year, we reduced about 24 positions, which from 2009 were about 186 less positions. In six, in this school year from last year, we reduced about twenty-four positions, which from two thousand and nine were about one hundred eighty-six less positions. In fiscal year sixteen compared to two thousand and nine, a twenty percent decline, which is keeping pace with our decline enrollment. Uh, the forecast in fiscal year seventeen through twenty assumes an additional reduction of thirty-five positions, for a total of two hundred and eighteen less positions since two thousand and nine, or twenty-five percent. Seventeen, we have in here eighteen positions, but we're still working through that with Mrs. Pelco. And eighteen, we're reducing five positions, estimating five positions, and nineteen, reducing nine positions, we're hoping to get those through attrition. And then la- in fifteen, we, not fifteen, but a couple of years ago, we've switched from a fully insured to a self-insured medical plan. And last school year in fifteen, we saved about one point eight million. At the end, once this fiscal year closes, I'll get a summary from our consultant, see how much it saved us this year by, by being self-insured. Also, as it was touched on, we also eliminated, uh, six buildings, repurposed one that we're in now, so we've changed our footprint. And then other cost-saving efforts, we implemented Ohio Online Program to restrain students in the district, to prevent them from going to online community schools, which essentially saved us about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Our, our charter school number last year was over nine hundred thousand, this year it's about seven fifty to eight hundred, so saved us some money there.
Excellent, we'll have to add two more items on there, the Excellence in Athletics with the savings with turf over maintaining the, uh, grass fields.
Right.
So we know there's sixty to eighty thousand dollars of savings there. And then RFP on the, um, Food Service Project, we'll have to add that on there as well, because both of those and that item, I mean, that, that took us from about a hundred and what, fifty thousand dollar loss to essentially break even, so that's a, um, another item that should be on that list.
Thank you. And then to wrap it up, the summary, um, slide thirty-three. So this slide is actually better than what I showed in the fall, uh, two thousand sixteen, anticipating to finish the year. Um, with a fifteen point one million dollar cash balance, bringing in seventy-two point five million dollars in revenues, and sixty-eight point seven in expenses, revenues over cash about three point eight million. As you can see in the out years, we'll start dipping into the cash balances. Before I touch on to that, just our bottom line, as you can see, as it starts dipping in, our deficit, we're going to see in twenty twenty about five point eight. I'm going to flip on the next slide, because here it has me show it, the, the renewal levy on the bottom. I want to throw the renewal levy and, and the total revenues, and just to show if the renewal was passed, when we started eating into our cash balance. So next school year, uh, we'll start dipping into it about four hundred thousand, and then in eighteen, we'll start dipping into, we'll be eating about five point one million of it, then nineteen, six point five, and then eight point nine. And it's primarily due to the TPP coming off, so that's three point eight million coming off. And, um, the good news is, we have a cash balance that we've built up, that we're able to rely on to eat into that, to get us through a few more years, but it's actually going to catch up. On the next slide, what I wanted to show was, so the red represents.
Can we go back one slide?
What's that?
We just want to ma- mention that John Kasich took that money from us.
I was just, I was just about to say that.
We gotta just mention that one more time.
I was just going to say that, when was the last time we had fresh money in this district, George? When was the last time?
Two thousand seven.
So if Mr. Kasich would have done his line item vetoed and stole three point six million dollars away from our district to give it to another district, or give it to charter schools, this community could have gone over a decade, hopefully maybe into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, without asking this community for fresh money. So it was Mr. John Kasich's action to do a line item veto to remove the TPP funding from this district, of three point six million dollars away, to take our tax dollars and provide it to another charter school or another district. So let's just make sure we highlight that.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to show on the next slide. So if you could see on the red, if the three point eight would have never, or the three point six would have never went away, this would have been our cash balance in twenty twenty, we would have finished about a five million dollar cash balance. As you can see with the TPP coming off in the blue, that's how it, that's how it dips from year over year. And then, um, this is just a cumulative slide that I had in here in the, in the fall that, um, I think was what received, like a waterfall slide. So on the left, what it shows is our two thousand and fifteen actual expenses, and then just kind of cumulative adding the expenses through the life of the forecast, through the twenty twenty, so as you could see with salary increases coming on, our healthcare increases coming on, additional monies that we needed for transfers. So our anticipated twenty twenty forecast would have been eighty point five million, but with some of the reductions we've made because of the, now that we're a smaller district, being more efficient, we were able to, with the reduction of positions, that saved about three point one million. Got some savings from other adjustments that added up to about a million, so bringing it down to seventy-six point four from where it had been, if we did nothing, so it's kind of got to balance the rising costs with being efficient. And then speaking of the renewal, so as mentioned, the last time we got fresh money was in oh seven, that was renewed in two thousand and two, or two thousand and twelve. It's a five-year renewal, so it's up, um, tax, what is, um, two thousand sixteen, we see collections through seventeen, the earliest we can go for it is this November. Um, and then we have three times in total to go for it. Uh, Novem- if November is one, then the other possible dates are, uh, May of two thousand seventeen, November two thousand seventeen were the two big ones, or August is two thousand seventeen's available, so we have, there's four times you can go for, we can go for it for three.
We won't need it but once.
So if we go for it in November, um, the deadline to file with the Board of Elections is by August ten. So we have a few more board meetings to go before we meet that, and the way the process is, is we need two board meetings. The first is to ask the county for it, the county certifies the funds. You get the resolution back from the county, and then you, then you approve their certification. And that wraps up the forecast, if there's any questions.
I have a comment, a couple of things, um, for anybody that's out there in TV land watching, and also you folks in the audience. Number one, we need you to help, your help to pass the renewal levy in November. I commend the administration and the treasurer for the good job they've done in, in minimizing expenses as much as possible. You can see from the numbers, they've, they've cut personnel, they've reduced costs, and any business person knows, you can't ask more from your folks. The two projects that we have going, uh, with a lot of help from, from George and from Cameron, and our construction partners are on time and under budget, and we've gotten an awful lot more for our students than we thought we could get. And you'll see that coming up here when the new middle school opens up. Um, so I think that the administration has done a very fine job of managing the finances. And, and one of the things that I believe in and the rest of the board believes in is that we want to give our kids the best education that we as a community can afford. And so we constantly think about our taxpayers, because we're taxpayers as well, and, uh, that's foremost in our thoughts. So we really need your help on the renewal levy coming up here in November. The second thing I would say to you is that our, we made a lot of noise when Kasich took the three point six million away, and we made a lot of noise with our representatives, uh, you know, Mr. Patton and Mr. DeVilla were very, very, uh, they were listening acutely to everything that Strongsville had to say, and a lot of other communities, and we banded together, and so the legislature was pushed into action to, to give us the extra funds for a couple of years. Well, the legislature will still be there, and we can still make a lot of noise, and it doesn't have to be TPP, it can be that state guarantee or whatever that George was talking about. When the time comes, we'll need community support as well to go back to Columbus and say, look, we give you lots of tax dollars. There's no right that you have to take all that money out of Strongsville and tell this Board of Education, just tax your taxpayers more, because basically that's what they said to us, just go out and tax your people more. We don't believe that's correct, we think we sent plenty of money to Columbus, and plenty of it should come back here for our benefits of our kids and our education of our children, and like, like George said. So we would ask your help with that, and, um, standard on the pedestal, but folks need to know, and we appreciate your help in passing that word around, because it's not too early to start. Thanks.
Thank you, Duke. Thank you very much. My old boss used to say, money goes where it's welcome and stays where it's treated well. And I think we certainly, um, we asked for the, the money that we have, and I think we've done a good job of treating it well. We treat it like it's our own money, and we've, uh, because it is. And we're, uh, working hard to make sure we, uh, we maximize every dollar. With that, so, any other questions on the five-year, Jane, Richard?
Thank you, then I'll have it on the, the next board meeting for your considera- consideration for approval, then to send down to Columbus. And with that, no more questions, that concludes my report.
Good job.
Thanks, George.
What a difference a year makes.
Yeah.
Superintendent's report, Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Neso, uh.
Dazzle us.
What, what was that?
Dazzle us.
Oh, I'm re- we're ready, I, I've got a crew ready to dazzle you with all that's going on. Before we start the report, I'd just like to welcome our high school students that are, are here tonight, I'm glad to see you're still awake. Good job so far, but I know there's a government project that's going on, and, uh, we're, we're thrilled to have you here, and, uh, excited for you guys and, and ladies to hear some of the things we're going to be bringing to the high school and to the district next year. So, uh, let us know what you think after the meeting. I'm going to switch up the order a little bit, uh, I'm going to ask Brad Walters, uh, who's a parent in our district, to come to the podium, and as Brad comes up, we're going to go to number two, which is the discussion item for the K to five trimesters. About three years ago, when I took the job as Assistant Superintendent, one of, one of my roles at that time was to work with all of our great levels in the elementary school, Aaron Green and I, uh, worked on that together, now Jenny and Aaron do. But we heard a consistent theme, uh, from our teachers and administrators of requesting that we transition to trimesters, uh, at the elementary level. Now, as a district, we are on quarters, so every, every nine weeks or so, we report grades on a quarterly basis. The request in the elementary was to move to trimesters, which meant instead of nine weeks, four times a year, we would go every twelve weeks, three times a year. Um, at the beginning of this year, we sent out a survey to all of our teachers, um, and all of our elementary administrators, uh, to see if there was still interest, and overwhelmingly, there was support and interest for exploring the idea. Our next step was to develop a, a committee. Uh, our committee, uh, involved district teachers, district administrators, and district elementary parents. Um, and Mr. Walters is one of those parents that was on the committee, so I'm going to turn it over to him to share the work of our committee, uh, our focus, and ultimately, the committee's recommendation. So Brad?
Alright, well, first of all, thanks for having me, um, appreciate all the work you do. As the superintendent said, I'm a father of two students in the district and one future Mustang, two, a kindergartner and a second grader at Whitney. When the superintendent called for volunteers, it was a topic that, uh, I was familiar with, so I felt the need that to, to put in my, um, my input. The committee began, um, with exploring a goal, and the goal was to provide a recommendation to the superintendent as to the reporting structure for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. With that committee, uh, we also posed a question to answer, and that was, what reporting frequency, frequency will provide the optimum instructional time between reporting periods to afford accurate assessment of learning while keeping parents informed in a timely manner? So the, the committee met, um, and the one thing that we needed to figure out were pros and cons. With that, with pros and cons, uh, we also needed to survey the other districts who maybe have already taken the ball and ran with this. Uh, both of those were, were addressed. First, that we, we, we looked at the pros, with talking to the other districts, um, with talking to the, the staff, the current staff and the, and the parents, the bottom line of the pros is more time. More time to get to know the students in the beginning of the year, more time to make a, a connection, to make that student want to learn for you. More time, uh, for the students to learn the routines of the classroom, more time to structure the classroom management, more time to teach the grade level content, um, and then more time to give intervention to those students who need it, and enrichment to those students who need it. Uh, so that was the theme with the people in the room, but also the other districts who are currently, uh, using the trimester structure. The possible cons were, what if a teacher doesn't update, um, the past, past online grade book? The parent would be, wouldn't be as informed as often. There would be a different reporting structure between elementary and secondary, and an adjustment would needed to be made in the current curriculum maps by the district. With those pros and cons, talking to the PTAs, talking to the community members that the parents were able to, to speak to, talking to, um, the, the, the teachers, we went ahead and then we came back again. I can speak to this in a couple of points, one, I can speak to it as a parent, I have three young children who are ready to go into this. And if I can have the next ten years of my student, my children having more contact time with their teacher, I think it's a great thing to do. As far as the concern with the past being update, updated, the teachers at Whitney are fantastic with keeping us informed, and I'm sure that they're, they're the same way across the district. Um, I can also te- talk to this about, uh, the point of view as an educator. I'm a first grade teacher at one of the districts, Bedford City Schools, who is al- already trans, um, have gone from the tri- or quarters to trimesters, and it's a fantastic program. Um, I have more time, more contact time with my students. The transition, transition to trimesters is giving me more teach time, more time to connect with my students. And I just make it my efforts, my best efforts to communicate with parents as much as I can. So the committee's recommendation was to move to trimesters for the two thousand sixteen through two thousand seventeen school year.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
And Brad will stay up here, so what we have is going to trimesters really is one change. And, and we'll get to, uh, the, the academic calendars, but it simply is, for your consideration, is a change to our calendar, um, in terms of when we report. So in Exhibit A, uh, which is what the board will vote on as the updated calendar, uh, you can see that all of the other, uh, days that are in session, days that are out of session are the same. The, the end of the quarters is the same, but on the sixteen seventeen calendar, you will see that November eighth, eighteenth is the end of the first trimester, uh, March third is the end of the second trimester, and June seventh is the end of the fourth quarter and end of the third trimester. And the pattern repeats in seventeen eighteen of a November date, a March date, and then a, a June date. Uh, we do understand that this is going to cause, uh, or we need to have key, uh, our strategic communications, because there will be some confusion. Um, as we, if approved by the board initially roll this out, uh, as to which system, um, each level is on. But as we've talked to other districts, uh, that have had the, the program into place, uh, that's an easy roadblock to, to get past. Uh, I personally spoke with, uh, the Berea Superintendent and the Olmsted Falls Superintendent, who have had the, the trimesters in place, the same structure, elementary versus secondary, uh, and they listed all of the same pros as Brad listed, and the community, uh, went through, or outside the committee went through, uh, as to why it benefits in, in the reporting structure. The other piece that we look at, and, and Aaron can attest to, and I'll speak on her behalf, uh, but when we look at a lot of our assessment strategies in the elementary grade, they're done three times a year. So if we, when we look at our Ames Web, uh, diagnostic assessments, when we look at our guided reading assessments, they're completed in fall, winter, uh, and spring. So it, it follows with that pattern, and we feel it just gives, in the elementary level, the amount of time necessary between, um, uh, reporting structures to give accurate assessment, give accurate reporting, to give our parents a good, uh, standpoint of where their children are at points of time throughout the year. Uh, and I support the committee's recommendation, um, to move to trimesters in, in the elementary grade. So while Brad is up at the podium with us, uh, would entertain any questions you may have.
I, I have a question, Mr. Neso. Was any discussion or, um, centered around altering when conference times would be? Or would they still align with our standard conference times?
We did have that discussion, um, with the, the group as towards conference times. Uh, they felt comfortable with keeping the conference times where they were, uh, even though they're a little early. We, in terms of trimesters, we felt that that was a benefit, uh, that we can, we can meet with parents, there's plenty of time left in the, in the trimester for support from home, and as we look at, uh, that kind of pattern, uh, falls true for both the February conferences and the October. So, uh, the committee felt comfortable with leaving everything else, uh, as is, uh, in relation to parent-teacher conferences.
Oh, I think it sounds like a great plan.
So, so I have a couple of questions. First, uh, you, the, the con that we mentioned, that was mentioned about the pass system. It, it's, it's completely unacceptable not to have the pass. It's completely unacceptable not to have the pass system up to date all the time. I mean, I look at it for my daughters at Albion, and it is up to date by the minute. I know my daughter's grades before she gets home. And so-
Sure, she loves that.
She loves it. She gets texts on her way home, like, "An 86? Come on!" But she doesn't love that, by the way. But we check it. I check it. I'm like addicted to it. I look at it all the time. But, so that's not a good thing. What I don't, what I'm having a little hard, and I'll promise this by saying that I'm a financial guy. So I default, that's why we hired the best superintendent that we could find and the best assistant superintendent that we could find. Maybe in the world. We'll go that far with you guys. But anyways, so that's why, so I'll default that. But what I don't get is, how does it increase time spent with a student? Because you're not, I realize that there's a process to pulling grades together, but that's not done during class time, right? I mean, that's not, why would that interfere? Why would four sets of grades interfere with the amount of time you spend with your, connecting with your student as opposed to three? I don't get that difference. And you're an educator, so you, I mean, how does that happen? Why does that happen?
Sure, well, you have to find the grades sometime, and the students spend a great deal of time taking the assessments. Where if I'm giving an assessment for a half hour, that's time taking away from the instruction that I could be giving on a certain topic. But the-
Won't you give the same number of tests during the year, or you'll give less tests? Or is this different? Am I thinking?
Again, I can speak from my own experience this year. I have given less assessments that I needed to fill, or to give report card grades, which has saved me hours. And not me, outside of the classroom, the students in the classroom. It has saved them hours of taking tests where I can use that with classroom instruction.
Okay.
And that's how I see what happened in our districts as well.
In a simplistic way, you're able to spend more time teaching than testing. My mother-in-law is a retired schoolteacher from Columbia Station. And the problem, the thing that she always said was, it's so hard because we test so much more now instead of teaching, helping those children get over that hump. And I'll go back, kind of what Carl said. I'm not an educator, that's why I'll, if everybody's in line here and this is what the right thing to do is, then I agree. But the only thing that I would ask, and I'm sure you guys have already got the plan for it, is let's measure. Let's see if we're going to get, if we're getting that result that we think we're going to get. Let's have this conversation in two years and see what's happened.
And the part that, going back to your question, Carl, I think a lot of the benefit is going to happen in the first trimester. And I don't know, Brad, if you concur. But when you look at especially our primary grades, you look at K to two, even throw three in there, the amount of time of review at the beginning of the year, you know, when you look at, I used to teach fourth grade, and you would forget what beginning fourth graders were. And you had to talk about how to get your notebook out, and how to put your name on a paper, and how to line up, and how to walk in the hallway. And so when you take a look at those first nine weeks and you review and you get routines and procedures, and you get some baseline assessment data where kids are, you're five weeks in, and as Brad is saying, you're saying, oh my gosh, I've got to get some stuff in the gradebook to have an accurate assessment. And it's about, then it becomes quality versus quantity. And so it's really for that first trimester piece. You know, Mr. Miko and I have had that conversation about how do we, and I feel strongly too, that we have to evaluate the success of any decision or change we make. I just, you know, I'm a data person. But for this type of change, it's going to be more anecdotal. And I just want to be clear that when we talk, take a look at that, we're not going to be able to equate, you know, assessment data is more accurate, or grade reporting is more accurate, or our students are achieving better because of this change. It's more, are we having greater contact time with students and instruction? And I would argue, you know, in my perspective, assessment is not something where the world stops. Assessment is a part of instruction, it is a part of learning. And we look at both summative and formative pieces of how we guide our instruction and how we make better game time decisions based on assessment. But that's the piece when we take a look, you know, a year in as to anecdotal feedback from our teachers and from our parents as to how the reporting structure is meeting the needs in terms of timely feedback. And I agree with you. If we are waiting to the end of the quarter, or the end of the trimester, especially in the elementary grades, to share with parents progress as to how our students are doing, then that is not quick enough. So I do feel that that first trimester is really where we're going to see a lot of the benefits.
Okay. And Erin, you're in agreement with this?
She was a part of the committee.
Jenny, you're in agreement with this? And Cameron's in agreement?
I am.
Okay. Brad, thank you so much. I mean, this is exactly how the, how community involvement works. I mean, someone, an expert like yourself, an educator, stepping up to help us with this is huge.
I appreciate it.
And it's your kind of help and your kind of commitment that really is going to make us so much better. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
For doing this and taking the time, and I know it's not easy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah?
So if we flip to Mr. Neso, page four, item three. There are two, we have the revised calendars for 1617 and 1718. And there are actually two changes on the calendar. The first change we talked about was the move to trimesters. The second change, as we discussed when we approved the calendars, was a possible-
This is only elementary school, correct?
That's only elementary school. K to five. The other change that does impact the entire district is early release days. When we adopted the calendars back in January, we shared that we wanted a little more time to assess the benefit of our early release times. We did that. We concluded our last early release day a few weeks ago. We did assess that, looked at our calendar. This year, we had five early release days throughout the year. That's not counting the last day of school. For the next two years, we are recommending reducing that to two early release days. So we had looked at our PD days throughout the calendar. As you look at 1617, we have an early release day scheduled for October 21st, and then a second day on March 10th. And then in 1718, it's October 20th and March 9th. So the trimester change and the two early release days are the only changes from the calendar the board approved in January. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the revised school calendars for 1617 and 1718 be adopted as presented in Exhibit B.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Duke, second by Jane. Any further discussion? George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes, five oh.
Now that goes back to item one under timely information. I'd like to ask assistant principal from our Strongsville High School, Mr. Stephen Brechner, to come up to present to the board an update on an exciting program we're going to be bringing to the high school next year on our Strongsville Academy. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. And I am, like Mr. Ribeau said, I'm excited to present this opportunity that we're going to be having for our students. Excited because it aligns with the two goals that were stated at the beginning of the meeting. It will help students achieve and also show financial prudence. So although my name is at the bottom, and that's intentional for the people at home, I do represent the high school team. Mr. Smithberger, Mr. Tomino, Mrs. Hart, Mrs. Hackman. We're always evaluating and trying to improve those two areas. How can we best serve the needs of our students at the high school? And how can we do it in a fiscally sound way? So to start off the presentation, I do want to make it clear that the team believes the best education in the high school setting is at Strongsville High School. You can see from the slides that were presented earlier, that's where we spend a lot of our time. That's where we spend a majority of our money, to employ people that give quality instruction, that research the best curriculum, that offer the best curricular activities and extracurricular activities. We think that we're a great school district and that we provide the best education possible. There is a however. However, some students are not, for one reason or another, able to access everything that the high school is able to provide. A few of those reasons. Sometimes it's medical issues that keep students out of the building. Sometimes it's a family situation, behavioral needs, credit deficiency. If the students failed over and over again, they're no longer on track to graduate with their classmates. Some trauma. We've had some students that for a short time, they've been incarcerated, and they're not able to be in the school setting with us. All of those, all, sorry. All of those instances and all those effects, and all those circumstances do not allow students to access the curriculum at Strongsville High School. For that, we have four programs that we currently use. For our credit recovery students, these are students that fail. And before we brought Plato in, the option was to double up in some of the core classes. For example, if you failed English nine first semester, you were going to be having to take English nine first semester and English nine second semester at the same time. Or at some point in your career, you would have to double up. We found that a lot of times I put students behind. And we saw a lot of students just not graduate because they were credit deficient. We brought in Plato to help out with that. So if you fail in an English class, or a math class, or any other class, instead of having to wait for that cycle to come back around, you were able to be put online and start to work on receiving that credit and recovering it earlier. So that's one program that we have at the high school for some non-traditional students. Another program that we have is educational alternatives. It's called ECHO as well. This is for students that have some behavioral needs. They are, for whatever reason, and whatever circumstances, an eight-period day going from class to class is not something that they're able to handle. So it's an adjusted school day at Educational Alternatives. The students are, again, the curriculum's all online. It's a referral process and that we've created and sustained as an administrative team to have students refer to this program. We do, right now, have Ohio Online, which is through our ESC. And that's complete education from home. So students who are no longer coming to Strongsville High School, where they would maybe go to an Ecot or VLA, we now have an agreement with ESC, with Ohio Online, that they take their coursework from home, full-time, and they still graduate with a diploma from Strongsville High School. And then the last one there is an in-house program. It's called ASAP, the Academic and Social Advancement Program. And the curriculum that we use with that is Jefferson County. So as I go forward in this presentation, I just want to show you where we're at. The advantages of using this model, and there's always advantages and disadvantages. One of the advantages is students are receiving an education that meets their needs. We're able to, providing these four programs, we're able to meet the needs of a lot of non-traditional students, and we've had success with those students where we did not have them in the past. We do have good partnerships with these groups. We have communication back and forth. Also, there's an increase in graduation for those students, and the instances of truancy and suspensions have decreased. If we have a student that we see is heading this direction, they're not coming to school. They're not participating in receiving their, engaging in the education that we're providing to them. Instead of going through the process of suspension and possible truancy, we're able to suggest some other alternatives for them to be successful. But there are some disadvantages with this model. The biggest disadvantage is that while we have four different programs, we're also using four different vendors for those programs. And no matter how concise you try to be, no matter how much you try and watch it, you still overlap with services when you have four different vendors helping you with the non-traditional students. Also, we're putting our students into the hands of multiple third-party providers. While we do have good relationships with these services, it's still, we're allowing someone else to take our students from us. And we're hoping that there's enough communication, we're hoping that there's enough drive for those students to be successful. And also, it's an increased cost to the school district. And that's something that is going to come up here as I continue with the presentation. Just because of the redundancy of paying four different services, there's an increased cost. So why Strongsville Academy? We don't want to do anything without answering that biggest question there of why. So why? Because we believe we can provide the instruction needed to help non-traditional students. We believe that if the oversight is done by our existing staff, that we have skin in the game. These are our students, and that we can help them because we know them. Our facility is also going to be used to house this, so we're not going to be paying any outside sources to use their facilities or pay for their utilities or anything else like that. This is, the ability that we have with the renovation is we were able to have some space that was repurposed and create it with this vision in mind of having an academy, Strongsville Academy, in that space. We believe that's going to increase our graduation rate for these students. And we also believe it's a cost-effective model that purchases curriculum and support from not four providers, but one provider. So by going from four vendors down to one, we think that there's a cost savings, and I'll show you that. So Strongsville Academy will be able to be flexible enough to catch all of these. It will help, it will house credit recovery. It will provide curriculum to our ASAP program, our in-house ASAP program. It will give us the ability to have oversight over both the onsite virtual students and also the offsite virtual students. So the blueprint for the academy is credit recovery. And again, this will all be in one, this will be in one space. Credit recovery will be a lot like if you saw it now. Plato has been happening for the past four years in Strongsville City School Districts, uh, School District. There will be a space set up for students to complete the credit recovery process. And now that, next year, we're going to be wireless, it's actually able to be done even if a student is in their study hall. Right now, we have a location because prior to the renovation, it wasn't wireless and we had to be hardwired in. With the wireless, we're able to have students with their Chromebooks log on and do credit recovery in the cafeteria, in the media center, in a classroom, wherever we would like them to be. Educational alternatives, so those students would come back to us, to that space, and it would be set up for them to complete their coursework. We would have a monitor that's scheduled there all day, just like we do now for our Plato students. We would have a schedule set up where they would come in either a morning or an afternoon session. This location is located near to, near an exit so that the students could be met and taken to the location. And then when their session is over, they would be then released from that area to go out that exit. We do not want the students to be wandering the halls, just like any other student. When it's educational time, it's time to be engaged in your education. And when that time is over, you are free to go and not be in that place anymore. For some students, that actually works out very well because they have jobs. They have jobs they have to get to, or they have a family situation that they need to get back to. Again, we're dealing with those non-traditional students. This, the idea of ECHO, we would phase this in. Because we have students being successful in the current iteration of this program, we would phase this in for the students coming into this type of program. Ohio Online. What we would do through this model is utilize something called the Edmentum Curriculum. And this is the same provider as Plato, so it's still all one provider. We would use that curriculum, and we would switch all that over where not only would we have oversight with our monitor, who's one of our staff members, but in this model, the student would be assigned a teacher from Edmentum to monitor progress, to assist. And I'll get into that more in a few minutes. In this model, we would also provide a Chromebook to these students so they could work from home. ASAP, the only change is a curriculum change. It would offer no change to the supports. The cost savings there would be switching from another third-party provider and keeping all with one provider. What is a virtual school program? This is a, the definition you see up on the board, of course, you can read. The basic tenets of a virtual school program is flexibility. It is what the students need it to be. It could be somewhere where they come for three hours a day. Or if they're engaged, they could stay for a little bit longer. It could be something where they do fully from home. It could be accessed at any point in time. It's always on 24/7. Students can log in and make some progress towards graduation. Strongsville Academy, we would partner with Edmentum, again, the same provider as Plato, and meet the needs of all non-traditional students. And I have on here some of the alphabet that we all love in education to talk about as far as the curriculum. It is vetted, it is recognized by- It is recognized by Advanced Ed, which is a nonprofit organization that looks at curriculum and says, is this good or not? All of that, all those letters behind the North Central Accreditation Association, Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, and the Northwest Accreditation Commission. In other words, people have looked at it all over the country. People have liked it, and they said, this is, this is the best education or best curriculum that we can give to these, to students who are not accessing the traditional brick-and-mortar education. It is NCAA-approved based on Ohio academic standards, and it offers a wide range of, of courses. Everything from core to electives. Even if we have some students who, who need some refresher with some AP course material, that's available on there as well. It offers the whole range. For our purposes, Strongsville Academy, we're going to be assigning them a teacher when they get this curriculum. That teacher is going to be able to monitor and communicate with students very effectively. And this is in addition to the monitor we'll have in the classroom. These virtual teachers that are purchased with the curriculum, they'll be able to email, message, chat with students, virtual classrooms. So for example, if they see maybe five or six of the students are having trouble with the same concept, they can actually call a class meeting where students log in at a certain time. That's all recorded and review the concepts with the students. Also, because we're going to have a staff member there, we'll be able to do one-on-one interactions with the students who come into the program. And we'll also be able to have another layer of oversight for students who are doing everything from home. So our monitor will be working in conjunction with these online teachers. The online teachers also provide a progress monitoring system where if a student's not logging in, it will generate an email to the student, the parents, the monitor, and also the administrator or administrators that are over the program to say, this student is not logging in, they're not making progress. We need to check in and make sure what's going on with that student. Also, for students on IEPs or 504s, the, the curriculum is able to be modified to meet their needs. The teachers there are not only certified in Ohio, but there's also intervention specialists that are certified in Ohio that can look at the IEP that we generate through our psychologists and implement with our intervention specialists and tailor the curriculum to those needs and offer any accommodations. So, I already heard two board members say they're not, they're not the education people. They're money people, so this, this is what I want to show. All right, so everybody wakes up now. All right. So the, the money portion. The financial breakdown. Our current cost for Ohio Online, it's, it's about twenty, well, it's 2,600 students. And you have this in your PowerPoint presentation as well, the, the copies. The current cost for a student is $2,640. If you add that up plus the technology cost, so we're actually paying a third-party provider to provide them with a computer. That cost is $1,000. So the yearly cost, right now, we have, as of this presentation, but I know this number has grown. When I made this presentation a few weeks ago, it was 54 students, but I know it's more than that now. What we would be cost, what would cost for the year is $189,000 for this program, Ohio Online. If we move this, and when, I'm sorry, when we move this to the Strongsville Academy, we would actually be paying $168,000, which is a savings of $20,000. Now, I wanted to be fair because I know numbers. You can, you can twist them however you want to. I wanted to do an apples-to-apples, sorry, sorry, George. But I wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison. The reality of it is, I, we could also, because of our cost, our economy to scale or our buying power, because of how many students that we have currently in this type of program, we would be able to drive that cost down. Instead of the cost being $2,900 per student with a full load, a full load being 10 semesters, we could drive that down to $250 per semester, which is $2,500. In a year, that number jumps from $20,000 in savings to $49,000 in savings. Per student saving goes from $515 to $915, just because of our purchasing power. And that's, that's the power of going to one vendor. Because if you're purchasing all from one person, you're able to get some deals.
Steve, before you go on, just to clarify, you know, as we've talked before, and George said in his presentation, that we've saved about $150,000 based on Ohio Online. If we look at that, and then we're showing here what we're spending on it, the reason being, if you look, that we are paying about $3,600 per student to be in Ohio Online. If that same student goes to E-COT or O-Della, we're paying out close to, you know, between $6,000 to $7,000 for that student. So that's why the district is saving money. They stay with us. It costs us less to educate them in our district than it would should they go to E-COT or O-Della. That's where you see the $150,000 savings.
And the savings being depicted here, thank you, Mr. Iba, is on top of that 150. So instead of 150, you'd be closer to $200,000 with the economy to scale cost for purchasing the curriculum. So that's Ohio Online. That's the savings from, from moving from Ohio Online. Educational alternatives, the way that they bill us, it's a daily rate. They, they charge per number of students that we have. You can see the breakdown there, $45 for one, 10 students, up to 10 students, $40 additional. That's again, a daily rate. And they do transport, and, and we, we pay them to do that, $20 a day. And that's nine students that we're transporting. So if you take that snapshot and project out, it's a daily charge of about $830. Over the course of a year, you can see I put 20 days, 90 days, 180 days. It's $149,400 that we would be spending out. If that was to remain constant with 15 students in this program, nine of them being transported. To do the same thing with Strongsville Academy, again, the cost stays the same. It's $2,900 if we were not to have the economy to scale. The savings on that, because we're no longer transporting, they're coming to the school. And the Chromebook would be, I'd put in there the Chromebook 225. The yearly charge drops to about $50,000. Right away, we would see around, around $100,000 in, in savings going from this program to moving this program in-house. If you figure in the cost to scale, it actually jumps to $108,000 to make this move.
What was that last part? Say that again.
If you, if you're averaging the economy to scale. So it's no longer $2,900, it's $2,500. Because if we purchase enough semesters, they drop the price.
Okay.
The financial breakdown for Jefferson County. Again, this is our ASAP, our in-house program. This is strictly a software change. Jefferson County is an online curriculum provider. We would supplement this, well, I'm sorry, not supplement. We would replace this with Plato, which we've already purchased for the next four years. This is a, a complete savings. This isn't projected. When we move to this, this will be a savings of $3,400 every year. Again, that would be not a change to any of the services for the students in ASAP, just a change in the curriculum. This next slide echoes what Mr. Iba said before, and this is very conservative. Right now, we have over 60 students that are going to other online schools. Whether that are, the two biggest ones are E-COT and Ohio Virtual Academy. Very conservative. If we were able to get 14 of those students back, and again, you're, you're paying a lot more than just the $3,400, or you're actually paying the whole amount. It's $5,800 for Virtual Academy and higher than that, $5,900 for an E-COT student. If we can get just 14 of those students back, we would recover $37,000. Again, with our economy to scale, that would jump to $43,000 that we would save. The benefits of that, of course, is we would have those students back. They would have our diploma, so it's a credited diploma with our name on it. And they would be able to have access to all the extracurriculars and co-curriculars that are available to all students. That, right now, they don't have access to because they're not in our school system.
How many, that, so, that estimate is bringing 14 back. How many are out?
Sixty, as of the last estimate from the state, or the last funding from the state, sixty, sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay. How'd you come up with 14?
I just did seven from each. I was just conservative with it. So the keys for success with this program is complete buy-in from all stakeholders. Communicating with the community of what we're doing. The administration, we've spent time and energy putting together not just this presentation together, but presenting in curriculum meetings to Mr. Iba and Mrs. Pelco to tell them what opportunities were available and, and hope that we could get to this point where we present it to you. Effective planning completed by Strongsville City Schools admin. The whole team has been involved in planning. Where are students going to go? What is their day going to look like? How are we going to have that monitored? Those conversations are, are being had. They've been had, and then they will continue through the summer here. A staff that's committed to student success, and I believe we have that. I believe we do have a staff at the high school that we could put together that will be committed to following up these students, whether they're onsite or offsite, and communicating effectively with the parents and guardians. Also, we'll be teaming the resources of the district to market and advertise that Strongsville Academy is now here, that it's in-house, that students can get a diploma from Strongsville High School, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Strongsville City Schools, where that opportunity was not available for some students before. So having that communication piece is important. Just reinforcing that we have a commitment to every student and their completion of the program. Once a student is in, it's not the attitude of, thank goodness, they're not in the hallways anymore. It's, we are now providing this service to them, and we are going to keep on them until they, they're successful. We're going to keep, and to the last point, we're going to recognize the problems and we're going to adjust. We're committed to their success. That's what you want us to do. That's what you pay us to do, and, and that's what we're going to do by having the Strongsville Academy at the high school. The last slide is a timeline for implementation. We have to finalize a meeting with the Edmentum sales reps to talk about finalized pricing, finalize the purchasing that we're going to be doing. Begin the process of informing our off-site students that we're providing this curriculum. Again, using the, the resources here in the district to do that. And that would happen over the summer months. Finalizing the daily protocols and systems for students within the Strongsville Academy. Basically, making that paperwork ironclad so that when a student signs into this, this program, they know exactly what's expected of them. They know what we're going to do to help them be successful, and that everybody's on the same page when they, when they start this. And then last one, the, the biggest part of the timeline is opening the Strongsville Academy for students starting fall of 2016. And that's what we have geared up for. And that is the presentation for the Strongsville Academy.
Are there any questions or feedback for Steve?
I guess the feedback I'd have is, I like the savings, obviously, right? But all the decisions we make, when we talk about balancing student achievement against cost savings, is, you know, if you look at what we did with food service, we wanted to make sure that we ended up with a better product at a lower cost. We consolidated buildings. We didn't want to just jam kids into a building to save money and, and disadvantage their education. So we wanted to make sure they ended up with a better education through that process with the new middle school and, and all, and that. And I just want to make sure that this, I, do you feel that, you know, these are vulnerable? The kids who are in this, in these programs are vulnerable to, you know, just dropping out, just, just going away, right? And we, we can't have that. So do you feel that this will be a better product at a lower cost? I mean, I think that's, I just, I just want to hear you say that. Because I don't want it just a lower cost. I want a better product.
Yes.
So you, you feel that this will be, I mean, all, everything makes sense? I just want to make sure that we end up with a better product.
I will say from my experience, in, in the former district I was at, I ran one of these academies there, and these decisions are not made in a vacuum. I mean, we, we vet them out. We talk to the people that are in charge of the curriculum. We talk to other schools who have this product. It, it all comes back with glowing recommendations to get this. This, and that's, that's the priority. Are we going to be able to provide better educational experiences and opportunities to some of these non-traditional students? The answer unequivocally is yes. The fact that it's going to be financially prudent for the district to go to one provider, that's, that's, that's the part that the non-educators get excited about. So yes, on both fronts, we feel this is the best decision.
And I know you well enough to know you wouldn't recommend something that you didn't feel was. But I just wanted to, I wanted you on record saying it, so.
Thank you.
And this has been a two-year process for the high school. They've, they started a couple of years ago basically saying, how do we provide better opportunities, better online providers for our students? Because we, we had so many multiple vendors. And to be honest, a couple of years ago, when you sat down and asked the question, well, well, why do we have this? It just kind of evolved, and we have it now. So let's take a look at it. And, and I do agree, and, and it's been a long road to get to this point. But I do feel, the financial piece of it is nice. It's an added benefit to it. But ultimately, it's, it's a better educational program for our students. And I know Steve had the slide about all the accreditations. The other piece of it that I don't think we talked a lot about was the NCAA Clearinghouse. So if you want to be an NCAA athlete, they only approve certain coursework to be eligible to be an NCAA athlete. So that is also a good testament because they have been very stingy with, with online, giving credit for online courses. So the fact that the Clearinghouse is coming out and saying that these are approved coursework, again, gives the validity to the quality of it. It's not one of those programs, which is important to all of us in the room, that I can log in, I can do some seat time, I can answer a few questions, and I can get easy credit. It is about going through the, the true rigor that we expect of our students to get that Strongsville High School diploma, and so we feel comfortable with that program.
I just have one question. You'd mentioned that each student is assigned like a virtual teacher that's off-site. How flexible are we with being able to replace that teacher? Say there's not a connection with that student, they're, they don't mesh or whatever. Can we say, you know, we don't like you for this particular student? Can we get another teacher for you? Or are you pretty much stuck with what you've got?
No, my experience in the past with, with companies like this, their, their customer service is the most important. And, and the reality is, we're going to be a pretty big purchaser of their curriculum. If we have issues or there's concerns about communication or a lack thereof with some of those online teachers, I, I know that we could bring that up, and they would take care of that issue. I'm confident with that.
Steve, to be clear, oversight is done by our existing staff. Is that going to be an increase in HR costs over existing?
No, sir.
Or is shifting the current oversight of four programs to the oversight of one program?
No, it'll be no additional cost.
Okay.
We're just going to better utilize the staff that we have in place.
And the other, to be clear, the assigned teacher is an Edmentum employee teacher?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're packaging this for non-traditional students, et cetera. What is our response if a traditional student comes to us and says, this works better for me?
As far as coming to the school for three hours or going home?
All of the above.
Uh, we've worked with those parents. We've, we've educated them on what exactly their decision, what decision they're making, the pros and the cons of it. As of right now, if a parent, up until this program, if a parent came to us with that choice, the reality is, they were, if they were of that mindset, they were leaving the district and taking all of that funding with them. This is a way that we can say, we understand you have concerns, the pros and the cons, but if this is the direction they choose to go in, we can at least have them stay in-house and still get a Strongsville City School District diploma.
Again, and I don't know what, what the, if we go forward, how it's going to be received. But on the one hand, we're messaging that it is going to increase the quality of these options and make it have the rigor that we want. At which point, I can imagine some parents saying the flexibility as far as non-traditional schedules. If I can get a similar quality product but have a better flexibility for whatever reason, that may become attractive. So I think we should be prepared for, if it's successful, the fruits of our success. Thank you.
For me, and I think most people in this table know that I love to squeeze a penny anywhere which way I can, right? So I, I love the savings part of it. And Cameron, you and I have had this conversation. Lives change, and in a child's life, things change. You know, you might come in the freshman and sophomore year, and you might have the medical issues or family issues and can't be in a traditional class. And by going to an E-COT, I'm, I'm less worried about the money. I'm more worried about the child and not having a connection with our building, our brick-and-mortar. The socialization skills that you get by going into a building and seeing 300, 400 kids walking around in the hallways. I mean, I'm looking at the high school students right now thinking, you know, you guys are different because you went to that building every single day. You know, you had teachers that held you accountable. And some of these students don't have that. But by having this academy, there's a link to our building. There's an opportunity for them to do extracurricular activities. What if you were a great baseball player, football player, or whatnot? And you just couldn't do it your first freshman, sophomore year. It's a lot harder as a, as a child, as someone who's 17, 16 years old, to go back into that environment after being outside of it and going back onto a team. And we're providing not only an opportunity for And we're providing not only an opportunity for better education, but also that link to that brick and mortar, to the community, to the, to the other students that they may have grown up with. So, for me, especially on this aspect, yes, the money's important. It's about delivering a better option, a, a link, something that's better for those students. Because those A-staff students, and I know directly because of part of the road, road, road responsibility for that group, I hope this can be a better option for those kids. So, that, that would be my hope for the academy. I, I fully support what you guys are trying to do.
Thank you.
That's my question, Steve. I guess George is kind of referring to it differently, connections, right? How does that fit into this?
The connections program we have right now, it would exist outside of this.
But it sounds like the same kind of kids, same issues.
Those students haven't chosen to be in a non-traditional school setting. Those students have struggled within the school setting, but they're still trying to make it work in their classes. And that's where a connections program comes in. This is something that's outside of that, because it's more intensive as far as the, the programming.
Sounds like there's some overlap to me, but I could be totally wrong.
I think the connections group are the children that are still waking up in the morning, getting to school, and staying in the building the whole day. And connections tries to capture and hold those students and teach them to stay within that, that, that brick and mortar building all day. We're talking about the academies for those students who are already elected or have no choice but to not be able to come into that building from morning to night. Road Act does a good job of holding those students in, these are the students that have already gone outside of our normal day.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate, thank you, Steve, for your presentation, the work of the high school administration in bringing this program, and we're looking forward to rolling it out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With this next item, I'd like Mark Donnelly, our Director of Business Services, to come up to review his items for the meeting. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Iba. Under Business Services tonight, we have two items for the construction project. They're both change orders. At the high school, we have a change order for sixty-nine thousand and sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents to renovate, completely renovate the Home Ec lab at the high school, which was not part of the original plan, but at this stage in the process, we see the need, we have the budget, and we'd like to recommend, recommend this change order to redo the entire Home Ec lab to better meet the needs of the kids and the, and the faculty in that area. The resolution, be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the execution of a change order with Hammond Construction to provide all labor and materials to upgrade the high school home economics lab at a total cost of sixty-nine thousand and sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
So, move.
In a second.
Second.
Motion by Duke, second by George, any discussion?
Yeah, it's just one thing. I thought we changed Home Ec to Consumer Sciences, are we back to Home Ec again?
It's a, no, it is Family Consumer Sciences.
Okay, I was just confused.
The way the construction team knows that space.
They're still old school.
Yes.
But they're building our new school. Have a vote, any other questions? Take a roll. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second item on the agenda tonight under Business Services is a change order for the middle school science labs. We had a STEM lab that was proposed. It is not a fully functional science lab. It did not have all the cabinetry, the plumbing, the sinks, the demonstration table. During review of the labs we had and the need to have four science labs in the eighth grade wing instead of just the three, we were requesting that this fourth lab be added in the eighth grade wing of the building. Total cost of this change order is eighty-six thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the execution of a change order with Hammond Construction to provide all labor, materials, furniture, and casework to upgrade the middle school STEM lab to full science classroom at a total cost of eighty-six thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Jane. And then, as, as the previous change order, RFC has approved and reviewed all these changes.
Yes, they have, yes.
Obviously Hammond has, GPD, everybody's on board.
Yes.
I knew the answer, I just want to make sure we, we brought it up.
Tap second.
And you're all, all good with it, George, right?
I am.
Okay.
I am. The nice thing is, is with, especially with the Home, Family Consumer Sciences room. Sorry, I'm getting there, Jane. That room was never supposed to be touched. It, it was the cabinetry, Mark walked me in there, and it was not the prettiest of rooms. And through, again, proper management, good work by Mark, we have the budget savings to be able to do that room, so that, really proud of that.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that is it for Business Services this evening. Let's see, are there other questions?
No, thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, thank you, Mark. Next, we have Jenny Pelco, Assistant Superintendent, for one human resource item this evening. Jenny?
Good evening. I have one item under Human Resources for your consideration. We have the elimination of two administrative positions. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that per Board Policy fifteen forty, the following administrative leadership positions be eliminated due to the reorganization and/or consolidation of administrative functions effective August first, two thousand and six. We have the Coordinator of Food Services, as well as the Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. Be it further resolved upon the contract, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following leadership contracts be suspended effective August first, two thousand and sixteen, as a result of the implementation of the above reduction enforced in accordance with Board Policy fifteen forty, and this is Jill Ores and Kelly Quinn, and this does require a vote.
So moved.
Duke made the motion. Second?
Second.
George, thank you. Discussion? The only thing I'll mention is that when we talk about financial prudence and we talk about student achievement, sometimes there's a downside to it, and it's unfortunate, but it's, it's making hard decisions that we have to make to, to, to move the ball forward, so I respect the hard choices that, that the administration is making. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
And then finally tonight, under Technology, I would like to bring up our Supervisor of Instructional Technology, Vicky Turner, to share an update on our tech initiative, specifically our one-to-one program. Vicky?
Good evening, everyone. Now, this is our one-to-one device, but also includes some other items in technology. Um, I started with our mission statement for the school and just highlighted up-to-date facilities and technology, which we have been working on diligently as a district. Included the new vision statement for the Technology Department, and I'm not going to read through that, but as you can see in the, the bottom half, the bullet points, these are some of the things that we will be moving forward with as far as technology and especially instructional technology. And then tied into this, and I will keep mentioning instructional technology, because it is really the instructional piece that is driving our need for Chromebooks. So, it's not that we're purchasing a bunch of Chromebooks because we just want more technology in the district. We are purchasing Chromebooks in the service of learning. So, just to note that Ohio is coming up with some new technology standards, and so is ISTI, which are international technology standards, and we are keeping an eye on both of those. They're both being drafted, and those guide us, especially as we're working through curriculum and technology and working on that alignment piece. And then I have a quote, and again, this is to keep our focus on the instructional piece of the technology. And it's when students can quickly access basic content that they can devote more of their energy toward deeper questions. So, our Chromebooks allow our students to access a lot of basic information that before used to have to come through the teacher and took up a lot of time, where the teacher was considered sort of the Wikipedia, the dictionary, and all of that. So, with our Chromebooks, we are enabling our students to quickly access basic information and then do much more with it, and especially in an inquiry-based model, where they are asking questions and they're finding the answer to those questions. In regard specifically to the one-to-one, we do have a Technology Committee, we have thirty-two members on it. We were meeting monthly last year and then quarterly this year. There was a mix of administration from central, from all of the buildings, principals, secretaries, technology, our AV technician, our network manager, our data coordinator, and you can see some of our names up there. And everyone got together, and we talked about many different issues, but then towards the end, one-to-one was our main focus, and we created some surveys, we sent our surveys out to parents, we sent them out to teachers, and as we looked at our survey results, we
What do you mean?
As we looked at our survey results, it really helped us form this. So, I only have a couple of slides in here, and I have the surveys available if anyone wants to see more of that. But what our parents had to say, you can see that over ninety percent found it very important or important to the integration of technology to their child's education, and, which is what you would expect in this day and age. Many parents, especially at the high school level, there's, their child is graduating, going off to college, they're going to be doing a lot of online work at the college level. And then also, we asked, what would you recommend is a good technology investment to enhance student achievement? And then I just put it in the percentages, so laptop or tablet for every student, a student, over seventy-two percent said that they would like to see that in the district. And then the rest of these items help guide us as we make our plans, especially for that instructional piece, so. One of the things that we look at when we are planning instruction in regard to technology, we call it the four Cs, and it's critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration. And we do feel that Chromebooks definitely help with this process. We also asked our teachers through our survey, and we asked them questions like, describe challenges you experience utilizing technology, and I put it in a summary, we actually had pages and pages of their thoughts. But they, they really do have a hunger to learn more themselves, and they want the technology to, to be seamless. So, they want the students to be able to know how to use it, they want to be able to know how to use it, and they want to be comfortable. They also talked about more professional development, and as you can see in the bottom, I put some of the items that they mentioned. So, things like video creation and editing, that's for students, so students can create and make these projects and present on a more global basis. They talked about apps and being able to use the software and website creation and educational games, blended learning, flip classrooms. So, these are things that our teachers are very interested in also. So, our goal then was to increase the number of Chromebooks available for all of our students. And we have been gradually working towards that. So, the tech department
Duke and my family, Jane's family, somewhere along here, you know?
That was my little angel on the screen, that's the reason why.
So, we looked at the buildings, we've been doing our tech inventory all year and going through the buildings, and what we saw is that we had some issues with equity in the buildings. And so, these are basically the numbers. I combined Albion and Center, and then I took Drake off, but Drake was in the fifties also. So, what we have now is our device equity plan. And this will bring us, Chapman had the highest, they were the highest at seventy-nine percent. So, what we did was then
Go back to the, the previous one?
So, we did not, based on the number of students and the number of Chromebooks that were in their building.
I'd seen up there.
So, the middle schools were at thirty-seven percent?
I can't actually.
And part of that had to do with the lack of wireless and
Ah, very good point.
So, we, they weren't purchasing as much. So, then to bring everything up to seventy-nine percent, you'll see the first in orange, the one-to-one, and distributing the Drake Chromebooks and those carts. These are the numbers that we need, so we know exactly where our Chromebooks are going. So, in addition to the one-to-one piece, which will affect ninth graders at the high school, we will also be providing more Chromebooks to every building, and so that the ratio is more fair.
That's great. That balancing that out is, is not, I, I remember when the Strongsville Education Foundation was purchasing Chromebooks, they were buying carts, and they were going to different schools, and they started in one side and they were working their way over, which caused some of the inequity, right, right off the bat. I mean, they were donating, so it was great, but, you know, when you looked at it in total numbers.
And so, we don't know, because this is new for all of us, and we're piloting some things, but seventy-nine or eighty percent might be fine. Like, that might be about as high as we go. Because it doesn't, no student needs to have a Chromebook in front of them every second of every class of every day. And our teachers have been fantastic at balancing what they do have. They share, they all have Chromebook calendars in their schools, they all share, they're color-coded, and they'll email, you know, and say, hey, I really could use a Chromebook card on this day if anybody can give it up, you know? So, they're very good at sharing anyhow, and, and they'll get better and better at that as they have more available.
Vicky, before you go on, can you just say one more time what the one-to-one means, elementary, middle school, and what one-to-one means at the high school level?
Okay. So, one-to-one at the high school, the one-to-one pieces, the ninth graders at the high school next year will all be given their own Chromebook, so it's one student to one device. So, they will take that Chromebook home, it will basically be their Chromebook. When they graduate, they will keep that Chromebook. So, what we are doing is fronting the cost for them, and as we get into the fees, you'll see that, for a very good price, cheaper than they would be able to go buy one right now, and they'll have that their whole high school career. We will keep doing that every ninth grade year. So, eventually, the high school will be completely one-to-one, and the Chromebooks that they do have there now, and those carts will start to trickle down to the elementary and the middle school.
And when they don't pay their fees?
George will email. Well, it's the, it'll be the same as a textbook. So, what will happen is they're, at the beginning of the year, they will scan their student ID to their Chromebook, and it will go on just like a textbook. So, if your fees aren't paid, or
This is so great.
If you're, if something happens, you know, that we would, we would know. So, in addition to that, we've been looking at our replacement repair. We are currently going to replace a hundred and six projectors at the elementary level and forty-five teacher computers that are nine years old. So, when we are done with this, and they've been upgrading all year, getting all of those computers upgraded, adding more memory where they could, when we are done with this, probably for the first time in a long time, we'll be at, at a very, very good place with our technology. All the teachers will, yay. All the teacher computers will be updated. Of course, the middle school and high school are in a very good place with the renovation in the building, and then we are adding these additional Chromebooks. Chromebooks are considered three-to-four-year devices. Oh, and I skipped one. Our tech department, they have been doing a lot of in-house repairs on the Chromebooks, so they learned, taught themselves how to replace the screens, and we are looking at a model where we are going to self-insure our Chromebooks, so we're not going to pay anybody extra money to insure them. We're going to self-insure, and then we're going to do our own repairs. So, Chromebooks are three-to-four-year devices, the end of life.
Me and Vicky have been working together with this plan.
The end of year for Google support and updates is five years. That doesn't mean they automatically drop off, but Google says after about five years, they're, some of them, they can't support anymore the updates. We've had really good luck with our Chromebooks so far, and we are hoping that some of those will extend beyond that. But just in case, we do have a plan. We're estimating our replacement needs and planning accordingly. So, these are our repair so far. And those Samsung, you see, we've only had to repair thirty-three. Many were under warranty. The Lenovo's have a very high repair rate because they, there was a bad batch with the keys, and it was across the board. On the tech coordinators list serve, a lot of people are complaining about their Lenovo's. They were all under warranty, they were all fixed for us. So, and then we're looking at purchasing the Dell eleven, which is what you have in front of you. And the Dell eleven gets very high marks for durability and for battery life. And you see, it also opens like this, so that's kind of nice for students. So, we have not settled completely on it, and we are still looking at pricing. Even today, I called the district because I knew they had the Dell elevens, and I asked, you know, you finished a year with the Dell elevens, how did you like them, how'd they hold up? He said, we loved them, we are purchasing more for next year. He said, we loved them, we are purchasing more for next year. But we are still, we're gonna look at that. That end-of-life piece, that five-year, is what makes us wait until the very last minute to purchase our Chromebooks. Because we want to make sure we get the latest model so that we have it longer. Any questions on the Chromebooks in front of you?
Just having fun playing, sorry.
Pardon? It does have an HDMI port, has the two USB, it has a SD slot for your pictures or your card. And.
It's a little more rugged, right?
It's a little more rugged. This is, really, that's one of the number-one things, it's more rugged, especially for our one-to-one. We also, I brought the Joey cart in. This is one of the carts, this is the cart for here right now. But you see, there's a basket. You can purchase additional baskets. This is very helpful for some of the younger grades where you can have these baskets available so they can go into a classroom, you can split it up, and then keep, bring them all back to charge at the end of the day. So this has come down in price, it's a little cheaper, about three hundred dollars less than the carts that we've been purchasing.
It was nice of you to name the cart after my father. Today would have been his ninetieth birthday, so he'd like that cart, so.
So the carts are coming down. As I checked into the carts, carts, we really have no problems with. They're considered like at least ten-year devices, but even then, vendors I've spoken to said we just, you know, they just last forever. So that won't be an issue for us. When we look at repair and replace Chromebooks, this is all speculation at this point, and this is money that we're kind of setting in reserve because in two, in October of two thousand and seventeen, two thousand of our Samsungs reach end of life. So what we're doing is, we're putting enough aside, or holding that a thousand a year. So those next two years. So if we don't know what's gonna happen with those Chromebooks, if suddenly we start to have a lot of Chromebooks that go, we want to be able to quickly replace them for the students. We're already going to have some Chromebooks that are in the media centers that we'll be able to instantly loan out for students.
How many year cycle?
They're five years.
Five years?
And those initial batch that we bought, we got a little bit discounted because they were older model. So this is not money that we are spending right now. But this is what we're putting in reserve for our repair replacement for next year.
And you're expecting that you replace this every five years?
Right now, what Vicky has built into the budget is an allocation of replacing a thousand Chromebooks a year moving forward. So every year, that quarter of a million dollars is set aside, just in case we need to buy up to a thousand Chromebooks, we'll have that. So we will, I'm sorry to interrupt, Vicky, but, you know, one of the things that is important to all of us is that we don't get back into the pattern of infusing all of this technology, or infusing all this money into our facilities, and then getting behind the times. So that, that was the charge that we had. And we've got that built in that we will not be without or using outdated devices. We've got that built into the whole program.
Also, I have on there ninth-grade student repairs, and again, that's speculation at the cost of approximately thirty dollars a repair. That's usually a replacement screen that we might have. In this, I did call some other districts and I checked their repairs. And this seems reasonable, but I have no idea until the end of next year what that number will really look like. Hopefully, it will be less. The new Chromebooks, and I stayed on the higher range of the many, many quotes that we got, just to, I didn't want to go under. For instance, that management license is now down to twenty-five fifty. So, and also the cost of the Chromebook should be lower than that. I'm, the carts are mostly going to the middle school, and some to the elementaries, and some to the high school. And then the case, we are looking at, for ninth grade only, and I'll pass this. We wanted to make sure we protected our investment. So this is the type of case that we are looking at purchasing. Students would get to keep that. And for those who don't carry a backpack, or just in between classes, or wanted to put it in their locker, gives them a little bit of extra security. Any questions on that?
How will the, how will the Chromebooks themselves be marked? I mean, how will, like, if you have, like, if they're assigned to individual students and you have ten of them and everybody's sitting around, all of a sudden like, wait, that one's mine. I realize the screens might be, you know, slightly different when you look at it, but.
We were going to let them personalize their Chromebooks since they are going to keep them. So they could put stickers on them. We will also have our in-house barcode and they have the serial number. But we, in talking to some other districts when they did that, first of all, the students will have some ownership because they are paying a twenty-five-dollar additional fee for their device, and it's their device. And then we're also hoping when they get to personalize it, it will have more value for them. I'm sorry. This is the fee schedule that we looked at, and again, this was something we debated and talked about quite a bit in the tech committee and also at Central Office. We are looking at a twenty-five-dollar tech fee for all students in the district. This is where we're working with George on some of the prices of less the amount for our free and reduced, free lunch, and the, less the ten percent that he has been seeing. So again, we're trying to be conservative with our numbers. And then the device fee, an additional device fee for the ninth-grade students would be twenty-five dollars. So they're paying fifty dollars a year, so that device would be two hundred dollars at the end of four years that they get to keep. It's their device. And then we are going to offer an optional insurance fee for thirty dollars. So, pardon?
A year.
I'm sorry, a year, yes. And again, I don't know how many people would take us up on that. But I know as a mother myself, I would certainly probably pay thirty dollars a year. It's the cost of pizza, one night of pizza, to make sure that, well, not one night pizza at my house, but. To be insured that they would have that repaired without charge. Otherwise, if their Chromebook, if something happens with their Chromebook, they will have to pay the repair fee for that. And if they lose it or anything else like that, of course, they'll have to, yes.
So, here's my question. We have a child, we have a parent who just says, well, you gave me the book. Give me the Chromebook, it's broke, too bad, give me another one.
Well, what we would do is investigate that, just.
No. That's an easy one, no.
It's in our handbook, we actually have a handbook that we've worked on, device handbook, so it's all spelled out as far as accidental or negligence. So if, especially if they've purchased the insurance, that's where you kind of get that, give me, that we broke it. But nothing for, in regard to negligence, we would not cover that at all. So if you.
Wait, I'm trying to hold it.
So we would kind of treat that like we would a textbook or anything else in the district that we have an interest in, we have paid for. But if something happens and they've been negligent with them, they would get charged. Just like a textbook fee, it goes into their, their fees. So total cost, when we look at our new devices, we have that. And then when we look at our new plus our repair, replace, and then minus any fees, we have that five hundred and fifty thousand, which is, George talked about previously, money that had been set aside for this purpose.
And to that, sorry, just go back to that slide, that five fifty, that's, that's part of the five hundred thousand dollar placeholder that I've mentioned. And also in her technology budget, already she had a hundred and fifty thousand. So the difference is coming out of that additional hundred and fifty thousand that was in her budget.
And the other, the projectors that we're fixing and the elementary computers, that other additional money we're using to upgrade all our equipment.
George, does your forecast reflect the incoming of these new fees? Because we're showing the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar tech expense. Do you reflect the incoming revenue from these fees coming in?
No, I did not put it in the forecast because it hasn't been approved yet. It'd be a net wash because of the five hundred thousand is already in there. So if her, the expenses were actually above, a hundred thousand above what was budgeted. So if the revenue comes in at a hundred thousand and the additional expenses, it'd wash out. So it'd be, if it's approved, that'd reflect it in next year's budget in the October forecast.
Okay. So you're saying the incremental fee revenue to the students would be offset by incremental costs from the added units, okay.
And Vicky, I know that when the bond issue first came out, Mark spent a chunk of money on technology for the elementary buildings and Chromebooks and things like that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that one of the rooms that's in this building is a warehouse for your technology. And we're harvesting all the technology that we've got in not only Drake, but Center and Albion. And so it's not just, we're going out and buying new and add, we spent the money, we're tearing these buildings down. We're harvesting all the technology, all the nodes, everything we can out of those buildings. And we have a specific plan and place where that, and inventory where that, those items are gonna be. I think it's important for people to understand that.
Yep, yes, we've done pretty detailed inventory in all the buildings and documented that. So as you've seen, the Chromebooks that are in front of you, the Dell elevens, and then the Joey cart and the cases, once again, those are what we are looking at right now. I mentioned that we do have a device handbook, and I will share the links later, but I just wanted to show you, there's a lot of paperwork that goes with this. And the handbook would be something that we would put on the websites. I started a Google site, that site will have information for parents, for staff, and for students, all about our Chromebooks and our one-to-ones, all of this material would be on there. In addition to that, some other technology things that parents might want to know. We also have, here's the one-to-one accidental damage, a little bit of that protection plan. And again, this would be something parents would get, in numerous avenues, we would send it out. And then we're still working with how we will roll it out at the high school. The best plan for those freshmen to get their Chromebook, talking about that first few days of school. We do have to wait till they get their student IDs in place, because we are going to bar, scan both of those at the same time. But we would like, I'll have some parent nights before, so if parents want to come in and hear more about it, if they want to try using the Chromebook, we'll do some things like that. And then I wanted to bring it back to our instructional technology piece. And again, we have the inquiry, and students need to have the space. And we would say they need the space and they need the technology to be able to explore. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about what the technology department has also been working on to be frugal. So there are a lot of times in magazines and in some other districts, they have these little communication centers, mostly for presentation, so students can present. And the one that's on the right, I looked it up in a magazine, it was like eight thousand dollars for that little setup. So one of the things we've done is we've purchased, you'll notice on the top right, the ChromeBit. That's what is cycling through when you walk into Central Office. That little ChromeBit is eighty-five dollars and it's a Chrome operating system. So we do have a lot of old keyboards, and we have my, extra mice. And we have standalone projectors, we have monitors, and we have TVs that have the HDMI capability. So this little setup right here becomes a Chromebook for eighty-five dollars because we already have most of the equipment. So what that looks like in a classroom is a teacher. We can get some of these little ChromeBits for eighty-five dollars, and a teacher can turn, have these little presentation centers for students. So now they can go and they can present and have their own little mini area. And we can also put them in places that it's difficult to present, so you can just move that. So we have been looking at that. One of our tech assistants also put something together for preschool. Instead of buying like a two or three hundred dollar, he went to and got dish racks to put the little tablets in and threaded all of the electrical through, through it. So we have been working on that piece, trying to be creative and innovative and save money at the same time. There we are in action. That concludes my report, if you have any questions?
No, comment though, first commend you and your department for everything you've done. That's where we wanted to go, I think, as a board and administration, and you're taking us there, Vicky, so thank you. Richard and I are kind of in this business a little bit. And I think, as you've seen already, there's a real advantage to picking one model and going with it, whether it's a Samsung that gives you the lower repair rates, or the Dell that's more rugged. Whichever one you pick, pick a good one and stick with it, because if you get the same kind, then you have less problems with jealousy of who has the one that looks cooler and repair rates.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I was gonna jump in and very thank Vicky for her leadership, because, you know, compared to five years ago, ten years ago, it's, it's a complete sea change. The comments I wanted to make is from a parent's perspective. The two things that we are going to be considering for next year that'll be different. There'll be a twenty-five-dollar tech fee. So that'll be, you know, I think we don't miss a opportunity during a board meeting to remind people to pay their fees. That's a new fee. I'm comfortable supporting that because it is a technology fee. And we are committed to making sure that that technology is embedded in the classroom, that it's just not a nice little shiny piece that we make ourselves feel good and say, hey, we have technology. But no, we're really gonna use them as tools for education in the district. I think Vicky and I can talk for hours to each other about digital citizenship. But it is incredibly important that we become a district that teaches those concepts and teaches those skills because our children are gonna inherit that world, and that's the world they live in now. That's the world they're gonna live in, and for them to be successful, we need to start that now. I think the one thing we disagree on is the pilot program's not fast enough for me, but I'll be patient. But the ninth graders, it's going to be a twenty-five-dollar fee. The tech fee, and that, that's just the pragmatic, practical thing to make these things happen. In addition to that, there's that twenty-five-dollar Chromebook fee. You know, that's fifty dollars a year, and you keep that Chromebook and it's one-to-one. This is the first year we're gonna do it, we're gonna measure it, we're gonna see what's successful, what's not. And then we can come back and say, do we need to continue on that schedule, or do we accelerate that schedule? I would predict that once the high school's on that schedule, the natural progression is gonna be the middle school, we're gonna consider it. Ultimately, elementary school, I think there's still a lot of judgment to be decided whether a first grader needs to carry a Chromebook around every day. But at the middle, at the high school, I don't think we need to argue or debate it a whole lot. At the middle school, I think it's the natural progression, but we'll wait and see. But you're talking at the high school, an additional fifty-dollar fee. But at the same time, we're committed to do that and embed it into the, into the curriculum, make it part of the classroom, make it part of the learning. And at the same time, be really judicious and say, if I have a workbook, if I can eliminate that workbook over time because I can do it through the technology and eliminate those fees, we're going to be very committed to doing that. I don't, as a board, we don't, I don't want to just add fees without consideration. So I can't point to, oh my gosh, you know, we're adding twenty-five dollars here, we're eliminating there. But that is the progression, and make sure to pay attention, and if we're not doing what we said we do, call us on it. And let us know next year that the fees just keep on increasing instead of shifting and balancing. And then I would tell parents, as far as that thirty-dollar insurance fee, you know, we had to throw a dart at the board and see where it sticks. And then each year, we'll come back and say, what's our experience? And if we can do a little bit less on that insurance fee, great. If we have to add a little bit, great. But we're going to make sure that that insurance fee pays for the repairs and pays for the upkeeps and does, so that we don't generate a new expense, but that it covers itself. I would suggest parents, look at your children, and if you're the, if you have a child that takes care of every little thing and you're comfortable not paying that thirty-dollar insurance fee, that works for you. On the other hand, if you have a child that you give them something and within a half an hour it's broken or stepped on, or needs a, needs to go back to the telephone store to get replaced or fixed, maybe that insurance fee is, is money well-spent. But I'm really excited about this because this is where we need to be as a district. Just adding fees without, without consideration is, is not something we're about. But this is a fee that's needed. It will increase our digital citizenship, it will allow our students to have the tools they need to be prepared. Thank you.
I would just add two things. One is that I have been working with Erin, she's been going through, she always goes through all the fees anyhow to see what can be eliminated. But we are working together and looking at that as we consider apps that we might add that would eliminate even more of those. And the other is, I deliberately left off anything in my slides about testing because we should be doing what we're doing regardless of testing. But this also greatly helps us with all of our online state testing, it's a necessity. So we also have that in addition. Okay, thank you.
And, you know, we started. And, uh, you know, we started off with a survey that said this is what people wanted, so we're delivering it.
Yeah. Thank you, Vicky, for your presentation. And with that, Mr. Nasa, that concludes my report.
Nice job. Uh, Board of Education, other?
I have one.
No.
It's kind of a, for me, it's a fun story. It's about our lunch ladies. Um, one of the slides up there was my little, my little angel, my daughter, who's a kindergartner at Kinsner. And I got a really nice, um, mail ma, uh, message from Adam Moreno, the principal. Um, and my daughter got selected to, um, or recognized as a good citizen. She had a little globe. And Duke, you alluded to it a couple of weeks ago about how important our lunch ladies are. I understand the past few months and things like that, i- it's been a, um, with bringing a management company and it's been, you know, one of those kinds of difficult situations. But I just want to say how important lunch ladies are. Um, my daughter got recognized by the lunch lady because my daughter was helpful. Uh, I want to thank Deb, is it Broda? Deb Broda and, uh, Kinsner. Um, and it was just a nice, uh, opportunity that my daughter got recognized and how important those support staffs are to us. Um, I remember my lunch lady at Indian Trail Elementary School in Stowe, Ohio and, um, it was just a nice, neat thing as a father. Um, I think it's important. And I think a lot of taxpayers that aren't parents or aren't connected with the schools, we've got a lot of people in this community that have already sent their kids through schools and through colleges and they're just, they're still hooked. It's a great community. How important that relationship is between our support staff and our children and our teachers and our, um, our leadership. So I just want to say thanks and I think we've got a wonderful, wonderful district and, um, it made me smile and made me proud to be part of Strongswood Schools. That's it.
Thanks, George.
I had one quick other.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to recognize, we have two Boy Scouts in attendance today, working on their citizenship in the community merit badge. Did I have that right? And so they've had some, uh, hard-hitting questions, uh, before the meeting and I'm sure there'll be more hard-hitting questions afterwards. But, uh, I just wanted to recognize Jacob and Devon for, uh, being in the audience tonight.
And we're sorry we dragged on for so long. To make you stay for so late, you should get two badges.
You get your badge for sure for putting up with this for two hours.
Stamina badge.
Stayin' awake. Um, we do have need for executive session on a number of items.
A number of items, uh, to consider the appointment and discipline, two separately, uh, of a public employee or official, uh, to consider the sale of property in competitive bidding, answer review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of employment.
Do have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Second by George. Any discussions? No? Colonel Ovins?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yep.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes and then executive session. We're going to executive session at nine eighteen.
Nine twenty it is.
There's no business afterwards, so we'll conclude the meeting. Anybody who has any, uh, the government classes, anything you need us to sign your sheets or whatever, we'd be happy to.